We'll reconvene the April twentieth meeting of Board of Supervisors. Today is April twenty seventh. This is our work session. So I'll reconvene this meeting and we'll start off with agenda item number one. Agenda item number one is a, um, I had talked to Mr. Cully, I believe, about a spring holiday for county employees. Um, it was really like a half a day on Easter Sunday. And I know that in previous years, places that I've worked have given employees off a half a day on Easter Friday. Excuse me, Easter Friday. And I thought it would be a way of showing employees again that we appreciate them and we can say thank you. And so I wanted to just put that on the table for discussion and get the opinion of the board members. And so I'll open it up to the board and, uh, Mr. Forehand, I'll start with you if you don't mind.
Have, haven't we added a couple holidays already in the last eighteen months? That are, Mr. Cully? Maybe not we, but the state in general?
The, the state has added Juneteenth this year, so it's, uh, June nineteenth.
Okay.
It's a new state. We moved some around. So they, they moved, they, they moved, um, Lee Jackson Day, got, they got rid of Lee Jackson Day, which was Friday in January, and made that Election Day a holiday. So it was just replaced. There was a wash, but we are one additional holiday up this in twenty-one.
And what's the, what's the total count of holidays right now?
Alan was just working on that. Thirteen, I think.
Thir- thirteen?
Twelve or thirteen. We can, I can probably name them if you want to number them down.
I mean, if it's twelve or thirteen, it's, okay.
They're, they're all the, the state holidays when the state shuts down.
Okay. Does, the state doesn't shut down this, that Good Friday?
No.
And the federal government doesn't either?
I don't think so.
All right.
I think a couple of cities.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Black?
Not at the time.
Mr. Chairman, since you're gonna call on us individually. Um, in my research, I have found that some of the northern Virginia localities have gone to a floating holiday due to the number of religion, number of different religions in northern Virginia, and they've used that floating holiday to allow an individual to take what they consider their most sincere religious holiday. And for the others, they can use it for whatever day they want, but the floating holiday seems to have been what I've, what I've talked to most folks, what they've gone to to actually, so that it doesn't just become a secular holiday, it gives the option for anybody to take any religious holiday. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sealy.
Beyond your floating holiday, I think is better than picking up Pacific Day. I agree with the fairness in that. However, the state sends us lots of unfunded mandates. Here they've given us a mandate that actually works for our employees by adding another holiday, uh, which sort of meets this purpose. Plus, I also think they, they have leave days that they could, can take for their regular holidays. And it's not limited to half a day. They can take a whole day of, of leave that comes in their, their, uh, benefits package. And I guess I feel, um, like that should balance things out, especially with the tax increase, that they're getting an extra holiday.
Mr. Thomas?
I, I just have, I don't, I don't have a problem with it either way. I just have a question for Mr. Cully that I'm sure, I'm sure we'll hear about later. When the, when the government is closed, what is, what is the cost of that?
For us?
For, for us, yeah.
Well, we would have people that would be still working because of, you know.
But I mean, normally like a snow day or something like that, you know, we pay for that.
We do.
What does that cost? You know, employees?
You know payroll in a day, five a day? We could certainly calculate that for you, but, you know, some people work holidays just to, you know, depend. So it, um, it's basically a holiday is for your salary people. So your hourly people, part-time people, if you close down for a holiday or not being paid, unless they're working. So some things would still be open. And then obviously there are some salary people that still have to work, both fire rescue, sheriff's office, public utilities. Some of that staff still works because they're twenty-four hour, you know, at least daily operations anyway, right?
Yeah, I, I was just curious as to the cost because I'm sure some, somebody's gonna ask what's the cost of county to be closed. So I thought you had that information. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr., Mr. Thomas. And again, um, you know, I was thinking of a half-day holiday, not necessarily a floating holiday. I wasn't thinking of the full day. But I think it's, it's just an opportunity for us to, uh, extend extend the holiday to those employees who do go to church services on Good Friday. Uh, some people to, to still attend on Friday afternoons. And other employees could, could, uh, then take that half day as they see fit. And as, as far as the cost is concerning, um, with it being a floating holiday, I don't think it would, would really hurt us that bad. It's gonna cost a little, but it's already in the budget. I believe wouldn't cost us any extra money. What's it gonna cost, Mr. Cully?
It would cost extra money for those folks that are in those twenty-four hour shifts or the, those, because they're getting time and a half for working the holiday. So if it was a half of, you know, four-hour holiday given, there would be four hours paid at time and a half for people that were, it's not a lot, but there is a cost. It'd be a cost at fire rescue and sheriff's office.
And those that are taking time off.
Public utilities.
And those that take the half day off would also be getting, it would be a paid.
Oh, they would be paid. We wouldn't be getting any work out of it. Wouldn't be, but there would be an extra budget cost to pay people that were working more money for working on the holiday. We have that built into the budget for the existing holidays. But we don't have it built in for another four hours. It's not a lot of money, but it would be more money.
No. You know? Yeah, um, listening, listening to the comments from the, from the board, what will, um, I'm willing to, I just wanted to have the discussion to see where everyone, um, how the thinking of the board was, not necessarily looking for a vote tonight. So, um, we can come back and revisit this at a later time. But, um, I think it's something that we can certainly, uh, look at. I don't have an issue with it. I just wanted to have the discussion. Well, thank you, gentlemen. And ladies. Yes. Uh, item number two on the agenda tonight is appropriation of the twenty-twenty Vaddy Grant, uh, local match, matching funds. That, you, Mr. Cully?
As, as you're aware, uh, members of the board, we, we were received the Vaddy, um, grant, but that was an unbudgeted expense. We do need to appropriate six hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars, um, as our contribution. And, and as it's in the memo, we can use that American Rescue Plan funds that we have not received yet, but we will, we've been told we'll be receiving an amount of five million, nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. Now, we only receive half of that this year, which even half of it will more than cover this, uh, appropriation. So we, we would ask that you appropriate that, uh, amount from the, basically what we call the cares fund. So it wouldn't be coming from the fund balance. It would be coming from that cares fund over, um, to, so we can pay that match.
Um, so, so I'm correct? You'd like to take the money from two different places? Part of the money?
No, just one place.
Just from the cares?
Just from the cares.
Okay.
We weren't sure. We just got that confirmation like last Friday that we could, we could use it on it, something we had already started, not something new. And so they have, they have, anything we were already in process, we can use that for, for broadband. So we would recommend instead of taking it from the fund balance, take it from the cares fund. The money's not there yet, but I, it, it will be.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would, I would move that we approve the use, oh, I'm sorry.
I, I was gonna ask Mr. Cully a question, just to clarify what you just said. We can use the COVID money for something started as opposed to something new or vice versa?
That we, we can use it, we can use it for something new. We never had a problem with, they'd, they'd announced early on broadband was an eligible expense for the new.
For new.
American, they got a new name for it, American Rescue Plan.
Right.
But, um, I just call it cares because I'm not gonna keep creating new funds in the budget. I'm just gonna keep dumping it in what we call Fund Two-Sixty.
Yeah.
But we just found out Friday that, that we can use it for something that we had already were in the process for like this. We'd already been awarded the, the grant. Um, so we can, we don't have to take it from the fund balance. And so that was a great, because I was worried it was gonna have to come from the fund balance until they agreed.
Would you like to make the motion?
I, I would move that the, the county appropriate six hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars from the American Rescue Plan funds to cover the Vaddy Grant local match for the county.
Second.
There is a motion and a proper second that we appropriate six hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars from the cares, uh, money for the Vaddy Grant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Six zero. Thank you, sir.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could also state, I'm also, I'm starting to get phone calls, you know, when, by contracts due. I'm telling eighteen months probably before people start seeing any activity.
They have to be complete in eighteen months.
Right.
This one wasn't a year. I think this one was eighteen months.
But when are they gonna start coming around?
Well, they've got eighteen months, and I will tell you that with what I've watched on Sparta Road, with the equipment shortages there are, they were supposed to be done in May, and we're still waiting for them to do the head-in. And it's all equipment and material problems. So, and, and as everybody's read about the chip shortage, if you haven't, um, I mean, the whole automobile industry is, is at almost dead stop on all vehicles because they can't get the chips. Well, those same chips are where needed in routers and switches and all the transceivers that you need. So I, I think that getting the infrastructure in place is gonna be critical. At least we're ahead of the curve. Hopefully Atlantic's bought or started to buy fiber because that's another commodity that's getting really difficult to get. There's only so much of it made. And as you know, you, those projects entail several miles of cable. So it's gonna take, it's gonna take a good bit. That's a lot of spools of fiber up to cable and conduit. So I would, the, the best I would tell anybody is eighteen months. Uh, because I think they're gonna have to get extensions if equipment doesn't start to move a little better.
Thank you.
Microphone. Microphone.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you. Um, when, when we start the utility projects, as Mr. Sealy mentioned, there is a shortage in fiber or, but we oughta, we oughta lay fiber along that path so the county could have a chance to connect in some other locations that may not be part of his grant. Can you at least look at that, Mr. Shibley?
Yeah, we're looking into that. We, we'll have a report back from engineering on that.
Okay, thank you.
Nice. Thank you, board members. Thank you, Mr. Cully.
I do have a question. Um, this is more technical and, Mr. Sadler, you know which direction they're coming from? With the fiber into these, uh, more of the, the Balti area?
So the two different projects, uh, one would come across the bridge from King George County into Port Royal. Uh, and cover the Port Royal side of the project. The Balti Road project would come from right there at Popular Inn, Popular Inn. It would be an extension from the end of their existing line. Uh, six thirty-nine, two oh seven area? Yes.
Other than Lady Smith Road coming, by the way. That's what I was thinking, because it was.
And it, and it may not actually end up being an extension of the existing lines. Uh, there, there's a possibility it could be all new lines, but that's the direction it would come from.
And do you know how far? I don't, don't recall. It's been a long time since I saw the map. How far up Lady Smith Road it's going?
It goes to Balti Road?
Okay, just to Balti.
And makes a left and, and makes the circle.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item number three on the agenda tonight is authorization, authorization for the county administrator to sign agreement with Keystone Information Systems Incorporated for the purchase of an information management system. Mr. Cully?
This is a project that, uh, the county staff's been working on for years, maybe four, but anyway, since the original RFP went out. Um, and as you recall, we had selected one vendor and then, and then came back and it, were unable to successfully negotiate a contract with them for the work. So we moved to the number two, which the number two is, uh, Keystone, uh, Information Systems. And then we were making good progress on that until the, obviously the pandemic hit last, last, uh, March. Um, but we have s- since then, uh, been able to finalize without, uh, visiting another site, which is what we were trying to do, visit one more, uh, uh, city actually that had left, uh, the bright system and it stalled us. But we are, are comfortable. I think, uh, you, you seen the memo that, uh, the commissioner and the treasurer's, uh, offices are on board with the change. I'm not gonna tell you everybody likes change, because if you've been using a computer system for, you know, near thirty years, change is hard. Um, but I think they all recognize that in the end, they believe it'll work as good or better than what we have. And for Mr. Thomas, we've aw- actually been able to negotiate in our existing funds to switch our Kama system to, which wasn't bright. That was actually running on Stonewall, which means I can eliminate the AS four hundred when this is said and done. So, um, that's just a side benefit. It was one I wanted to be able to do, but I wasn't sure we'd be able to afford it. Um, so, um, we're ready to get started.
So you may wanna check with the shipyard to see if they can use the.
Use it, yeah. I didn't wanna have to buy another one of those. So this, this will definitely, uh, make that obsolete, can, you know, keep some old data on it until it dies. But, um, this will put all of it on server base with backups and those type of things. Um, and I think will move us much in a, a more forward direction with how we serve, uh, you know, things on the internet to, to citizens as well as to our employees. Um, and I think we'll be able to do a lot, uh, with the system, uh, budget-wise and other, other operational things. Uh, I think for utility billing, it's gonna be better. Everybody's been included and have been at the table and been on visits and looked at how other counties are using the system. Um, and, and that wa- that was an important, uh, investigation to make sure it would do what we needed to do, um, because not all of them do that. So, uh, when you, when you get into it, you find that some of them don't work as good as the system we had. And we do believe this will, will, um, you ha- might have to do it different and, but you will be able to do it and get it out in the system.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cully.
And we do have the funds. That was borrowed years ago.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Cully. Um, I can take a motion and have discussion, or we can just have discussion and then?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the agreement with Keystone Information Systems for purchase of the information management system and associated, uh, products and services.
Second.
There's a motion and a proper second that we authorize the county administrator to sign agreement with Keystone Information Systems Incorporated for the purchase of an, uh, information management system. Any discussion?
Mr.? I mean, this has been a long time coming. We know, Mr. Thomas and I had a discussion about AS four hundreds because he and I started in, in the IT world around the same time, and this system was almost around then. And we're still using it and the ability to maintain and actually write applications for it is getting just about impossible. So I'm glad to see us, that we have found something that universally works for the Commissioner of Revenue's Office, the Treasurer's Office, Finance, um, Utilities. I mean, we're talking, every department is gonna touch this. So I think this is a great move forward.
Mr. Thomas? Mr. Cully, quick, quick question, though. The four eighty-nine ninety-four, you have it listed as the all-in price, so that includes training?
Correct.
Implementation, data conversion?
There, there may be that we need to hire an independent person to help us with some data conversion, a former person from Bright to make sure that we work our way through that. So we, we, I mean, we actually have more money than that set aside. Um, but that's the all-in from this company. Um, and that's, they're doing some data conversion, but it, it, when we were looking at Tyler, we learned the same thing that we needed some, we were gonna need some help on the bright side to be able to make sure we get all of the data out that we need. But so, but from as far as Keystone, it's training, they're coming down, all that's, is, is, you know, there may be some instant dentals, but it's as close as you can get, but it's every package. So.
I'd, I'd really just like to make sure. I, I spent ten years selling this software and, and it's very complicated to say the least. And, and the biggest thing we can do on the county side is to appoint a project manager on the county side to make sure they interface directly with the, uh, vendor. Because you'd hate to spend five hundred thousand dollars and have it ruined by, you know, one person who didn't like the system. So.
Correct.
Training is really key, and we need to make sure we're all committed, all departments.
Yeah, training's definitely, but it's all laid out and they'll train and, and it'll be spread out as it's installed. So obviously the first thing that has to be installed is finance, because that's where General, the General Ledger lives. So they have to, have to get finance, uh, running and, and so that'll be the, the first piece that goes in and should go live. Um, our plan is by January, so we've got a lot of work to do.
Now, one, one last question I just thought of now, and, and when they set up the system, they're gonna set up the county as a business unit to some degree or something like that, whatever term they use. Will there be another option of having additional business units under the county?
I don't think under us, there, the, the, the software, we, we had worked on exploring whether this, and the schools and, and have been a, attending some of our meetings and, and, and some of the things and have had shown some interest. So there may be some way of, for the schools to operate. And also, or, early on, we had the, uh, town of Bowling Green, because they have an AS four hundred um, involved to, to see if they wanted to go. So there may be some, um, ability to add them, but it may be some cost, uh, it won't be what we're paying, obviously, to, to add them in as a, uh, another segregated off of our books.
Right. That's, that's a separate business unit.
Like a node, an, an, another node on the system.
It would be great with the schools because we do interface with them.
When you set up the GL, and I'm, I'm, I'm not accounting, I just had to do this, but when you set up the GL, you can have a, another unit under that. So you can do reporting on that unit and your unit.
Right, which would be the schools. That would be the way the schools would be set up. So I think it has that ability, and we'll make sure that we leave that ability in case the schools wanna come along at some point in time. But then you can set up another whole, there's probably a way to, in talking to the president, there's a way to set up maybe another whole operation on our server that would run something the size of the town.
All right. Last thing, really, really last thing is the first couple of months should be set up with, with design and discussions and, and making sure you talk to people before you start coding and things like that.
Oh, yes, yes. They got all that in. Yes. They'll, they have a, a, come down and will interview, you know, obviously Tamika, and they're gonna, when they get ready, they'll be interviewing the treasurer, the commissioner of revenue, and their employees that they put in the, you know, to talk. But yeah, that, and, and that's one thing we discovered is that you've got, your staff has gotta take, uh, the time to work with the vendor to answer the questions. You can't get in a rush. And I've talked to everybody about this. I know you're busy, but the day they're there wanting to talk to you and asking you questions, you, you can't just go, would you, you know, answer one, two, three? You can't just pick. Because at the end, when it's all set up and you go, why is it this way? Well, because you picked answer two over here. Well, I didn't know it was gonna be. Well, you didn't ask. You've got to have a dialogue, because when they're asking those questions, it's gonna have an effect on the software in the back, on the, when it's finished. And, and we have learned that from all our discussions in other counties.
It's much easier to design rather than redesign.
Redo it. And that's right. So we.
Because this, this four ninety or four, four eighty is not gonna hold up if you gotta redesign.
Oh, no, 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 no. We've gotta get it correct. And, 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 and we're gonna, and I think everybody's committed to that and every, and like I said, the, 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 the stakeholders from the department, all the departments have been involved and have learned all those things. So I think we're gonna go into it with the right attitude that it's not, you didn't buy Microsoft Word and install it. So it's not like that. So I think they all understand that, and it's gonna be a lot of work on our part explaining to the company how we do things and how we want things to work.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Cully. And, um, again, we certainly appreciate you guys being patient with us as Mr. Sealy and Mr. Thomas. It's been a long time coming. So we're looking forward to helping us be more efficient. So there's a motion and a proper second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries. Finally, on the agenda for tonight is the, uh, continued discussion of the proposed, uh, fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget and the fiscal year twenty, uh, two, twenty-six capital improvement program. So, Mr. Cully, you gonna lead this discussion or we just gonna have it up here at the board first? We can certainly.
I don't have anything extra to add.
Okay.
We, we, we have lowered the number a little bit due to the savings we, we had on the bonds and the refinancing of the bonds. We pretty much knew what the uh, borrowing, the new borrowing was gonna be debt service, but we didn't have, uh, all that debt service that got refinanced. So there are some savings. Um, I don't remember, Tamika's better with this, because she put all this together. Since, and you know how much it went down? Hundred and sixty thousand dollars this year. We went down on the general fund, um, but due to bond savings, but, um, obviously, um, I don't, I.
So.
Um, Pam has, if you want, uh, if you're ready to do anything or adopt, Pam does have the numbers there. If you wanna see, uh, the adoption resolution, we do, we did prepare one in case you wanted to do that. If you wanna change stuff, we'll, we can, we can deduct that with a calculator what those things are.
Did he clarify, clarify the one sixty?
It was savings from the refinancings that got lumped in with the bond sale.
Right. Is, is saving the county a net one sixty?
Correct.
So that'll go back into the general fund?
Correct. So the, 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 well, not, we, the, the general fund that we're, is lower. So now instead of with, um, uh, eight cents, you remember, we still had
Seven hundred thousand.
So that we get less than that to balance. So we're, our balancing number went down.
That's what I wanted to.
Correct.
Six.
Hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Down.
Yeah. So now it's five, five forty? Five thirty-seven.
Five thirty-seven. Yeah, five four, right. You know, finance people, we gotta give you the number to the penny, but.
All right. That's a, that's the exact number. So we went down to five forty, and each penny's worth three cents.
Three cents, right.
Okay. All right.
But that, that just came in with a re, you know, Courtney's, uh, refi, refi, and they didn't know going in whether that was gonna be something that they, um, saved any money exactly on or not. They just, because we were going to the market, decided to do it.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman? I have a question. Mr. Kelly? Um, I have surprisingly gotten some feedback, um, and a request the last couple of years, but, um, more intense of, of late. That's to open up at least one facility for trash and debris on Wednesdays. And I'm seeing how the Bowling Green site is.
That's the only one we take the debris. Right. That's the only one we really take any debris.
Would it be possible just to get us a number on what it would cost to open that facility on Wednesdays?
Probably can come up with a.
And that, just that facility, that would give someone, if they had, uh, a load that they had to get out of their vehicle.
Right, didn't have to stay on their truck.
Day, or we had a storm or whatever, but, uh.
If we have a bad storm, we open up, you know, we, we have the ability to open up, um, it's like, uh, you know, a lot of trees are down. Uh, we can, staff-wise, open up the debris.
It's a hundred and ninety thousand, like, ten or fifteen years ago for all of them.
Right, but that's.
That's what the savings was by closing on Wednesday.
I think it was ten. Less than ten thousand opened Bowling Green. Because we have other employees working. We just don't have the attendance in the sites open. That's our day to work on trucks and, you know, move cans around, stuff like that. And that's something the board wants to do. It's something we certainly, you know.
Would that impact the ability to do that behind-the-scenes stuff?
All of it.
Can, can we have a staff meeting and talk about that? Because, I mean, you can come back and net a little bit. It's nothing to appropriate to the budget.
It's not something that we gotta discuss with this upcoming budget.
No, because you could come, it's, it's not, we wouldn't have to pull the public hearing on it, because it's not, not a huge, huge dollar amount.
All right. Thank you. Can we get the?
Mr. Black?
Do you mind if we get the resolution?
Pam, Pam has it.
Are we not gonna look at the budget?
Certainly. Certainly.
I think, I think, you know, we talked about the, um, the budget and what we needed to, to, um, fund the balance with the tax rate. And. you know, part of that was, thank you. And part of that was, um, to take a look at the eight cent, then you said we needed three additional cent to really make it work in, in your, um, from your purview. So I went back and I, and I looked at, um, uh, the eight cent increase. I know we're not talking, we're talking about the budget as well. And I think we're gonna be in pretty good shape because there are other factors that I think that we didn't talk about is, and part of that reason was why I wanted only to do four cent because I think there are going to be some additional savings. No question, no question. So in terms of the budget, we, I think we pretty much agree on the budget numbers here with the exception, like, we didn't know about the one sixty. But our budget numbers that you gave us, um, I think we were all pretty comfortable with and supported the budget number for next year. Again, my concern was, um, the uh, tax number, but we can go through this, uh, just for, just having questions about the numbers.
Uh, in particular budget questions are okay?
Yes, any, any question. We're open for the budget questions right now.
Yeah.
Yes.
But I, since the sheriff is here, Sheriff, could I ask you a question regarding the budget? Cause you're, I mean.
That knee giving you trouble again?
Uh, just age.
Oh.
I'll try to answer it if not, uh, I'm sure the major in, uh, Tanisha, but.
Well, you know, Father Time is undefeated, right? All right, just a, just a real quick one. You've got, how many open positions now? Twelve?
We had thirteen.
Thirteen.
I filled five. I put out four conditional. We'll, we'll have, I think, four left.
Built five, four conditional, so you only have four more?
Yes.
Okay, okay. That was, that was kind of the gist of my question was had you started hiring those people now, so they'll be on this year's budget versus next year's budget, but they'll be in the, the five you hired are going to be in this year's budget?
Yes, they, they know that they're coming on and what my, for those that we already took was part of last year's. So they knew, for example, the training was thirty-six thousand, forty thousand is what we were. We go to the approval, they know that that could come July one. For those conditional that I put out, same information is given to them. We're waiting for the board's approval and we said it can only go up, can't go down. Does that help?
What, what can go up and can't go down? Their salary?
Their salary, because right now we're, we're under the forty thousand.
Well.
Makes sense.
Yeah, we're, I mean, we're just doing the budget now, so their salary's being set now.
He's, the people he's hired know that this potential increase is there. They're hired at the lower salary, but have been told, not promised. The board's considering a pay scale and you would, you will move up to here, July one, if the board adopts.
Correct. And if the board adopts, I think Tamika has all that information and all of our people, we left those vacant positions in, in that new proposed one.
Okay, and, and I'm.
All the vacant positions are built into that number that we gave you.
Six forty-seven.
The six forty-seven is built into the budget.
Right.
That he hires anybody, may, it's not gonna affect that. When they get bumped up to the new starting salary, that, it's already budgeted.
That was, that was kind of my question is how, how, and I'm, I'm sure Mrs. Smith has got all, all that data.
She should.
On hand if we need to touch.
She should.
But the bottom line is you had, you had positions that were open for quite some time. So you're gonna have a salary savings anyhow. So even if those people came in on a different level, you'd have money in your budget now to balance that out. So that was kind of what I wanted to figure out is how they were starting now, how many you had to go and see if we could get them on as quick as possible. So there, there may be a chance that you can reduce the, um, the amount of overtime we've been using?
Again, it takes us a year to train them and we're doing everything we can to prevent the overtime.
Oh, that's right. It takes a year to train them. You got any transfers?
Not yet, and we're hoping maybe this might help.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Any other, what, you have the budget sheet in front of you? Any other questions on the twenty-one, twenty-two budget? Um, we, I think we've talked about it. Any questions, Mr. Forehand, regarding the budget?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Black, any questions regarding the budget?
No, I would just say that, that savings a hundred and sixty thousand dollars would really, really help these schools with that multipurpose building. But anyway, I'm, I'm just putting that out there. But anyway, um, no, I don't have any.
Mr. Sealy, any?
I have no additional questions, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Long, any questions regarding the budget? Mr. Thomas, any question?
Um, I think I, I, I asked mine, it was, they're related to staffing and sheriff's office, but like, like Mr. Black, I'd like to give that hundred thousand dollars. And not a building. But I don't think anybody else agrees with that either way, so it doesn't matter.
Okay. So, um, a-again, the, the budget, if you want to de- debate or make changes to the budget, we can, we can do that. But for clarification, the, the budget, eight cent tax rate goes into effect July one, is that correct? June third, or July one? June, I mean, June.
The tax rate is actually set for the calendar year, the budget.
Calendar year, right.
Budget's July one.
July one.
Um, the, the tax bills have already been sent to the printing company. I don't know whether they've been mailed yet. And just for, if you want to see and anybody that's watching this, um, they're out there on the treasurer's website. You can go view your bill. So you'll see what your new bill is, even if you haven't gotten it in the mail and just curious.
But it's coming.
What, but it's coming. Um, I think the personal property was, is, was out even faster. So some people may get their personal property bills. You know, a lot of people don't actually see their real estate bill because it goes to their mortgage company, but.
But the personal property rate has not changed.
Has not changed. Nothing with personal property.
Everybody understand, the personal property has not changed.
The rate did not change. Your assessed value of your vehicle may have changed.
Well, my understanding is that you own a pickup truck.
It went up.
A, all of them. I talked to the, to the, uh, commissioner of the revenue and I see two folks from there and, and they said that if you own a pickup truck and with the lack of vehicles being produced new, that the used value, the used pickup truck's value has increased.
Correct.
So anybody, and I'm in that category owning two, that, um, we are going to see some increase, even though they're old.
Right.
Mine's two thousand and three and a nineteen eighty-seven, so. Yeah.
Anyway, the rate did not change. The only, only rates that you approved to change to are tied to the real estate rate. So things that are real estate and real, tied to the real estate rate.
Mr. Cully.
But, so that, the, the budgets that affect July one.
Uh, is there, um, one of the things we hear a lot and, and it has nothing to do with this budget, but I'd just like to, if there's some information that you could get to us in relation to the complaints that I hear all the time as far as tax concern deals with a personal property. So there, I'm sure other supervisors, um, I hear a lot about, you know, I bought an RV, yeah. I gotta pay this, uh, for the county. Is there a way you could, um, we could get, like, for example, um, and maybe you'd have to work with the commissioner of revenue's office. This has nothing to do with budget, but just as a comparison, a breakdown of like, you have an RV, if you have a pickup truck, if you have something for, I'd just like to see what the comparisons are, the breakdowns to other counties. Um, just to see what it, how we compare in, in, um, in compared to other counties.
I know we're high, we're, but if you look at other, some of the other counties that surround us have other things that offset some of their tax rates.
I'm just, I'm just curious to see it because.
We've done it before. I think Alan's got one he could update.
Yep. Just to see what.
I don't know, we looked at RVs, but I know we've looked at vehicles and the rate.
Yeah, 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 and.
And it's based on value, so you buy a six hundred thousand dollar RV, you know, then that's what it's valued at. That's, you know, more than a lot of people's houses. And then you put that personal property rate on it, it's gonna be something, so.
Yep. No, I appreciate, I'm just, I'm just kind of curious as to, because it's a lot easier to see the real estate and figure out the real estate than it is personal property, because some of them have like fifty percent of this much and then.
Correct. They have an assess, they have an assessment ratio.
Right, or the commissioner of revenue up there does it on a certain.
Correct, fair market trade and, and, right, hundred percent and, and all over.
So when we compare everything, like, what even.
Correct, you have to get all that information to know. You cannot look at the rate.
Right, you gotta look, I'm just looking at the total tax. What am I paying in tax in Spotsylvania? What am I paying in tax in Hanover? What am I paying in tax? I'm, I'm just curious.
Sure.
It's just for informational purposes, so that way we can see it, the whole board can see it. And when someone says, oh, I don't. You know, I, I, I would like to know that. So thank you.
Well, you know, you know, my feeling there is that, you know, real estate and personal property tax, you know, some people pay more for a vehicle than they do for their home.
Right.
That's the issue that I think that we should look at going the other way and making sure, because your home, you expect to pay a pretty good sum for real estate tax. And, and you can probably justify it. And in the end, I think that, uh, revenue would actually be steadier because your personal property tax decreases based on value as it gets year by year. So I think it would give the citizen an, an opportunity to really see where the value is. So I think we could get the same amount of, of funding, revenue for the county. But I think the proportionality of it could be different and people would see a little break on the personal property. And I think it would sit well with people rather than paying more for a vehicle than they do for their personal prop, for their real estate. You know, that's my take. I think we should maybe do a workshop, take a look at it.
And we can get you, we can get you the information.
Right.
But remember the budget's set with all those things now, so.
Correct, yeah, yeah, we, yeah, so that's, you know, that's water under the bridge, now.
Yeah, that's, that's one of those things if you want to do, we need to know, you know, we'll work on it by the fall so we can plan moving into the budget with a different mindset on personal property.
And if it brings them the same amount of money, then you can't really argue, but I certainly feel better about my home being taxed more than a vehicle. We appreciate. All right. Um, any discussion regarding the, uh, twenty-two, twenty-six, uh, capital improvement? Well, I think we pretty much hashed out the budget.
We have, we have, we have been round the block on that.
Right, so, um, with that, um, if there are no more discussion, uh, we're gonna adopt this, are we, are all in agreement that we're gonna adopt the budget tonight? All in agreement? All right, then I'll take a motion to, uh, adopt, um.
Mr. Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt an appropriate, uh, funds for the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
And?
What all, Mr. Cully, what all?
You can adopt the, you can adopt the budget resolution.
Right.
That we presented, and then you could adopt the, uh, the, the CIP plan.
Is that all the one, is that one motion or that?
I'd make it two.
Two, okay.
I would, I would, I would adopt, and you're not appropri, you're not appropriating yet. You're just adopting the budget and then we'll, we, um, or is that appropriation resolution, right?
What does the top of that say?
It says a resolution adopting appropriate.
Appropriating funds for the fiscal year.
Uh, adopt the school budget, but this resolution ado, adopts everything and, and it gives the money that we've set aside to the schools, but then they've got to come back so we can appropriate the school portion by category. So that's the one thing that you'll have left on the budget after tonight would be, so this gives the schools, here's your total amount of money that we, and they'll go back and have a meeting or two or whatever, and then they'll come back with instruction administration. Remember we did that last year? Um, uh, so that would be what would be left to do. So you would be appropriating this for July the first, um, e- except for the school portion, which we'll get back from them sometime and do in, in probably the second meeting in May, I would hope, or the first meeting in June.
Okay.
Is that motion okay?
Yeah, the motion to adopt this resolution. R seven dash slash twenty-one resolution.
Uh, all right, I move that we adopt the resolution, R seven dash twenty-one.
There's a motion to adopt, uh, resolution, R seven dash twenty-one. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Budget resolution, budget resolution. R seven twenty-one is passed.
What else do we have to, on the capital?
I think we just adopt the capital improvements, uh, program as presented, because the, the, the twenty-one, I mean, the twenty-two, uh, money is in this, that you've already done. You're just adopting the rest of the five years, making it a plan.
All right. All right, so can I get a motion to adopt the, um?
I make a motion, we adopt.
Twenty-two, twenty.
The.
Twenty-two, twenty-six.
Twenty-two, twenty-six capital improvement plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, proper second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
CIP res, um, is passed.
And we adjourned tonight, correct?
We did.
That is correct. Next regular meeting, May eleventh.
May eleventh.
At, uh, five thirty, we're doing a program at the, at the, um, uh, memorial.
Mr. Kelly, are the other flag poles gonna be removed as part of this? We have two sets of flag poles right beside each other. We're planning to take down.
It's like a. It's going to the county park, yes.
The, the other, the other, the other set, the original set.
The original set are going to the park.
Great, like that. Thank you.
Okay, on the agenda was not, uh, closing comments, but since we will close the meeting, uh, Mr. Forehand, you have any closing comments?
I do not, thank you.
Mr. Black, any closing comments?
Yeah, just really, uh, briefly, the, um, hearing for, with Aqua Virginia was last week, uh, and very frustrating, once again, um, made some comments in regards to the state corporation commission. I'm not exactly sure why, um, everything else is opening up, but they're staying closed. I thought that's, uh, beneficial to the companies that are going through the process right now, because it's hard for people to take off work and, um, you know, be able to video conference, uh, and wait the state corporation commission to, uh, to call. So, um, that's kind of it. Uh, they look like they already had an agreement in place even before the hearing, so that's another frustration. So it looks like they're gonna get around a ten percent increase. Yep, so that's, that's it. Thank you.
What's that in comparison to?
Uh, Mr. Shible actually gave me some great numbers. I don't have them with me, but, um, I, one of the things when I, uh, was there is our current rates or our at five percent per year for the next, which was proposed, our proposed five percent rates, uh, for the next uh, four years, I think Mr. Shible has for us was still about forty dollars to fifty dollars cheaper per month than current, uh, Aqua Virginia proposed rate. So when we go up, if we were to go up, and I know there's disagreements on this board about that, but if we were to go up to Mr. Shible's five percent a year in Ladiesville Village and Pendleton till twenty-twenty-three, we would be at five thousand gallons of large sewer, we would be approximately forty dollars a month cheaper still in twenty-twenty-four for us compared to Aqua's, what Aqua's getting now.
Wonder if they'd like to be part of the county too?
Yeah, that's, that's an interesting take.
Why don't we ask them?
Yeah, go ahead and ask them. We can, we can have Mr., uh, we can have Mr. Cully ask them if they would like to be part. I'm sure they would pop right on that.
All right, Mr. Sealy?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Long?
Just remind all you gentlemen that next month, Mother's Day is coming up, so don't forget the, uh, mothers in your life. Subtle reminder of somebody else.
Thank you, Mrs. Long. Mr. Thomas?
I didn't have any, but I, I do have one. I, um, I lost another constituent due to the COVID virus, uh, passed away early yesterday. Older lady, but she had COVID pneumonia. And unfortunately, when I was here one day, they said they had extra shots and we couldn't get in touch with her to get her a shot. So it, it's important that we get all the folks shots that we can, and, and I can't stress the importance enough again, that we get folks their shots so we can prevent as many needless deaths as possible. So that was.
I'd just like to extend, uh, thank you to, uh, Chief Loftus and Mr. Whitman, the sheriff's office and Virginia Department of Health. We held a community vaccination for second shots at Second Mount Zion last Saturday. And, um, I think we ended up with a few shots, I think eight or seven or eight shots that were left over because we had to open up another vial for a person who had, ended up getting a first shot. But, um, I thought it was a success. Um, hopefully we can continue to have community, uh, vaccination sites. We're gonna continue to push them, I know Chief, we're gonna continue to push, uh, them to make sure that we can have sites in, in the county, because I think it's critical to, um, the county. Uh, Chief Loftus?
Mr. Chair, uh, we were notified today that we will have a Johnson and Johnson clinic on the fifth, May fifth. It'll be at the. It'll be at the Virginia Bazaar property. It'll also be a drive through like Second Mount Zion.
All right, thank you, Chief. That's good.
Chief Loftus, what was the, the date again?
It's gonna be Wednesday, May fifth.
Chief, okay.
We're gonna, we're gonna put that on the website?
We'll put that out. Yes, sir. We just found out today, so we're still reacting to it. It's gonna be two hundred. It's going to be from eight in the morning to one in the afternoon.
Thank you.
Close enough to your side of the county?
Uh.
Virginia Bazaar.
Chief, do they need to sign up? Is there a way to sign up for that, or is it first come, first served?
It's gonna be the health department, and this is going to be a targeted vaccination. So they're gonna kind of pick where that, where that target group is, whether it's medically fragile, older, or one of the other, um, one of the other groups that they're targeting, so.
What, what, what should we communicate as far as?
The, the best thing we can communicate is contact the health department, call that, that one eight hundred number, let them know, hey, I'd like to go to this clinic. Am I eligible to go? Can I sign up? As with all clinics, there is a waiting list. Um, so if you can't get on the regular scheduled time, try to get on that waiting list. Mr. Andrew will tell you at Second Mount Zion, there was a number of shots left over at the end of the day. And they're always looking for people to be on that list that can react quickly.
Chief, can you put something out there and send it to us?
Sure.
Yeah, that, that we can just post on our, we all have social media pages.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
I know this has been a long month, uh, gentlemen. We've had, uh, meetings almost every week. But, um, certainly appreciate you taking the time, Mr. Long, as well, taking the time and, um, getting, getting the work of the county completed. If there are no more discussions, I'd take a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Chairman?
Motion to adjourn is second.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? We are adjourned.